All those in favor? Any opposed? Very good, thank you, and one good evening. Good to see everyone this evening. Whenever you're ready, Kathy, please roll call them to order.
This meeting which is hereby called to order is in compliance with the notice requirements of the law. Public notice was posted in the office of the Board of Education and communicated to the municipal clerk, The Daily Record, and the Star Ledger on January 9th, 2017.
Very good. If we could all stand and sit in the line, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And you're ready, Kathy, please roll call. Mr. Brucia?
Yes.
Ms. Dodd?
Here.
Ms. Rosario? Mr. Miller?
Ms. Laurie?
Here.
Mr. Scarnio?
Here.
Mrs. Mullin?
Here.
Ms. Phillips?
Here.
Ms. Ruiz?
Here.
Mrs. Schauer?
Here.
Thank you very much. And good evening, public. Thank you very much for coming out this evening. This is the portion of the meeting when we have our first public comment session in reference to any agenda items. You'll be given three minutes to speak. After you give us your name and your address, write a petition in the minutes for a grand total of 30 minutes. So if anyone would like to speak right now on agenda items.
Yes, Monica Pelestis, 393 West Blackwell Street, Dover. I was just wondering, on the policies that you are approving on a first reading tonight, where can we get copies of the policies? It's just a question. Where can we get the copies of the policies on first reading?
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Questions? Agenda items? Very good. I will close the public portion at this time. And again, at the end of the meeting, we'll have a second public portion for any items to speak about at that time again for three minutes for a grand total of 30. Thank you very much. On to approval of minutes. We have committee of the whole from March 16th and executive session from March 16th.
Oh.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any questions or comments about the minutes? Corrections? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? Very good, okay. One. On to communications, please, Kathy.
Okay. First, we had a letter from New Jersey School Boards Association congratulating Mr. Scarnio for satisfying all the requirements, including earning a minimum of 60 credits to his attendance at the Academy Programs and the New Jersey School Board Annual Workshop. And also, in addition, he has successfully passed a certified board and leader examination.
Very good.
And the second item that we have, also from New Jersey School Boards, we have a legislative update from March 24th, 2017 on ACR-227/SCR-134. I'll read it. "It expresses the legislature's intent that school districts and public institutions of higher education continue to act as safe zones and protect identities and data related to undocumented students and families. This non-binding resolution expresses the legislature's intent that school districts and public institutions of higher education continue to serve as safe zones and resource centers for students and families threatened by immigration or discrimination to the fullest extent provided by the law. The resolution was approved by full Senate earlier in February."
Very good, thank you, Kathy. I know that all board members received that in your school board's newsletter, but I thought it was important for the public to also hear that this is now where the legislature stands. Very good, thank you very much, Kathy. Moving on to the board secretary and treasurer's report, please.
I move we approve the board secretary and treasurer reports, month ending February 28th, 2017, with a cash balance $7,385,473.
And a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments?
I do have a comment.
Yes.
Our treasurer just adjusted the number this evening after we set the reports. The new balance is $7,385,473.60. There's a $98 check that was not included in the new charter.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, any questions, comments besides? Alrighty, roll call then, please. Mr. Brucia?
Yes.
Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Mr. Scarnio?
Yes.
Mrs. Mullin?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Ruiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Schauer?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Laurie. On to superintendent's report, please, Mr. Becker.
I guess 48 hours out of 70 million isn't too terrible. The first item, we recommend that we add a district placement transportation for special students as mode.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any questions or comments? This is effective April 5th through the end of school year?
Yep.
Good. Okay. Roll call, please, Kathy. Mr. Brucia?
Yes.
Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Mr. Scarnio?
Yes.
Mrs. Mullin?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Ruiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Schauer?
Yes.
We also ask your approval for field trip and travel authorization as for the attachments.
Still moving. Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions or comments?
Can I mention with the field trips, it does include the Morris Arts, and that is the high school and the middle school. There was a discussion going on, the middle school is led by, that's incorrect.
That's very good. In the past, it has been open to parents that wanted to go and visit during that. The auditorium is open while the students perform. It's open to the public, basically. So if any board member were available to meet him on that day, I know it's Laurie and I have been there several times.
Yes, it's very nice.
It's wonderful, it's wonderful. Okay, any other questions or comments? Alrighty, roll call then, please. Mr. Brucia?
Yes.
Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Mr. Scarnio?
Yes.
Mrs. Mullin?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Ruiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Schauer?
Yes.
Yes, Mrs. Laurie. Thank you, Mr. Becker. Personnel, Mr. Miller is not here this evening. Ms. Ruiz, would you like to take personnel, please?
I move that this board approve staff and extra services appointments for the 2016-2017 school year as listed. New personnel employment appointments are contingent upon the required state and federal criminal history background checks in accordance with New Jersey Code CH116. Nice to meet you.
Second. Very good. We have a motion, we have a second. We're moving that through item number six. Any questions, comments from anyone? Everyone's good? Okay, roll call then, please. Mr. Brucia?
Yes, the one to stand.
Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Mr. Scarnio?
Yes.
Mrs. Mullin?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Ruiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Schauer?
Yes.
Very good, okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Ruiz. There's a B on that on page four.
I move that the board approve staff and extra service appointments for the 2017-2018 school year as listed. New personnel employment appointments same are contingent upon required background checks in accordance with the law.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments? Alrighty, then, roll call, please. Mr. Brucia?
Yes.
Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Mr. Scarnio?
Yes.
Mrs. Mullin?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Ruiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Schauer?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Curriculum, co-curricular activities, Mrs. Mullin.
I move that the board recommends approval of the 1718 Dover Public Schools calendar.
Second. Okay, and we have a motion, and we have a second. Redundant enough. We have a motion and we have a second. Any questions or comments? This is the draft of the calendar? Correct, Mr. Becker? This is the draft of the calendar?
Yes, this is a, this is a draft of the calendar. We will be providing it to the association. Then we'll take a look at it and then make any other recommendations. And we'll also wait till we get the final state testing guidelines from the state of New Jersey for next year. In the past, we thought we had struck it and then there were modifications made. So that's why we're just announcing this draft until we're sure everything is finally in place.
Very good. Okay. Any other questions or comments about that? That's clear? Okay, and B?
I move that the board recommends approval of the Dover High School program of study for the 1718 school year. That includes about 150 high school courses. It has at least 18 A replacement courses. It has eight courses in our health and science that are linked to the Rutgers University College credit. And it gives us what we think the four-year program's going to be for the performing arts program that will be starting next year.
Very good. Any questions or comments about that? A lot of reading for board members. Second, Ms. Laurie. A lot of reading for board members. I appreciate that everyone takes the time to do that. It's very important.
Every year, there's more opportunity.
Every, every, every year, there's more to be added to it for less, less money. I don't know how we do it, but we do it. Okay, thank you very much. Roll call then, please. Mr. Brucia?
Yes.
Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Mr. Scarnio?
Yes.
Mrs. Mullin?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Ruiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Schauer? Yes. Thank you very much, Mrs. Mullin. On to community relations. Ms. Phillips, I think you're on that committee also, aren't you? Community relations, no, we're not. How about Mr. Scarnio, would you do the force tonight?
No, I'll move the board approves as requested for the policies listed below. This constitutes the first reading, with the second reading to be accomplished at the April 25th, 2017 meeting. I will say, this is a tremendous amount of paperwork, effort, and cost for some very small insignificant changes that have to be made to a lot of these policies. I think some of them are just a word here or there that's changed. And it goes on constantly, and it's probably harder to find out what the change is than to read the whole policy. You'll never make it up.
Okay. We're moving that. Adjusted through the policy. Any other questions or comments about the policy?
I have a, I have a question. Just kidding, actually, two questions. Can you clarify the difference for me for first reading and second reading? Like, you're saying the first reading is now, and then the second reading being April 25th. What's the difference?
This is your first opportunity. You've read the policy, you've gone through it. If there's questions from the board, you could possibly still, at this point, make changes in the policy reporting whatnot. Then the second reading is what we confirm to our district. We vote on it and we confirm it to our district. Okay?
Thank you.
Yes. That's a good question. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Yeah, roll call, please, Kathy. I don't think so. Second. Thank you. Mr. Brucia?
Yes.
Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Mr. Scarnio?
Yes.
Mrs. Mullin?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
I'm gonna abstain from that one.
Ms. Ruiz?
Abstain.
Mrs. Schauer?
Yes.
Three, four, we do not have the votes then for a first reading.
We have six.
Do we have that? One, two, three? Oh, okay. We're good. Okay, thank you. Scared me to my man.
Sorry. If you know, in other areas of interest.
I just want to answer one question for clarification from the attorney. If the members do not vote or they abstain on the first reading, what happens to the second reading? They have not voted on it?
They can still vote.
They can still vote on it, correct?
Sure.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. I know if they weren't here for the first reading, they can't, but they are here.
They can still vote on that, too?
Really?
They don't have, I mean, it's up to them if they wanted to abstain at that point.
Right. Okay. Just wondering. All right, very good. Go ahead, Mr. Scarnio. We've got some good news.
Yes. Mr. Sean Bullock, our athletic director, was recognized by the North Jersey Athletic Conference with their sectional award of merit. And in the award, they state that Mr. Bullock demonstrates an example of how civility, respect, and character must be a hallmark 22nd era sports program. And it's one of the things, you know, we've, especially in light of our recent incidents, our teams always, always conduct themselves with respect for the people that they're playing in, for the fans, and are truly great representatives of the town of Dover. And a lot of that is a reflection of the way they are, they are taught and led by our athletic department. So a very nice job by Mr. Bullock. We also have, congratulate Sophia Violis, first team all-conference volleyball. We have Nate English, who was elected as second team all-conference in football. Mr. Wayne Valentine, a longtime fixture in Dover High School Athletics, was inducted into the Hall of Fame, which is that New Jersey Scholastic Coaches Association Hall of Fame in recognition of his 50, over 50 years of successful coaching and service in track and cross-country. Tremendous example of dedication by Mr. Valentine. And then we have. Yeah, Gilder Lerman Institute, Dover teachers, who was the teachers? It was Laura. Chrisniak, who was an English teacher in eighth grade. Cynthia Ginsiger, supervisor of social studies. And Robert Riccadella, teacher of social studies in seventh grade. And they were selected for that and for, so altogether, a very nice showing for Dover School District.
And seeing where they're gonna study and who they're gonna study with, it's phenomenal.
And all pictures, congratulations. And pictures can be seen on our new Facebook district page, Dover Public Schools on Facebook. The beautiful pictures that were on here, gorgeous. I love that we can do this now so that everyone can enjoy what's going on. And I also did see somewhere, I think it may have been on our Facebook page, that again Dover High School received the award from the Referees Association, the Good Sportsmanship Award from the referees.
Soccer.
And it was other teams.
Yes. So that's fantastic. We've received that in the past, and I think it's only in its second or third year of existence, and we received it each year, so that's fantastic.
And those awards are voted by the officials themselves in their organizations. They.
That means a lot.
They grade the schools when they actually officiate the contest. And that's how those schools are selected.
Yes. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Scarnio. Buildings and grounds, Mrs. Dodd.
Property, return property damage. We do have two incidents at the East Dover School for property damage and property. A handicap bar was ripped off the wall, and we had graffiti written on the chalk outside the building. Other than that, all the other schools got zeros, which is awesome.
That's great.
Yeah. I ask that the board recommends approval of the use of the Dover Public School facility as follows. Football University's back in town. And that will be May 12th, 13th, and 14th. We'll be using the gymnasium, classrooms, and cafeteria in Hampton Field. And then the Tavado Police Department wants to use the Dover High School auditorium for a program on heroin and opioid abuse. And that'll be Wednesday, May 3rd at 7:00 to 9:00. It's awesome.
Very good. That's open to the whole town.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Any other questions or comments?
What grades does this football university target? Is it high?
It's always that, I think it's just the high school.
Is it not?
Yes, it's just the high school, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's, yes, it's just the high school.
Okay, thanks.
And for the new board members, too, that, that's a program that students from all over the area pay to attend. And by us hosting it, our kids get a break to attend that. A lot of cases, our students would not be able to afford to attend a camp like that as they do work with them and are given reduced rates, or in a lot of cases, even allowed to attend for free on an active basis. So that's, that's really the benefit of us hosting this event.
Very good, and that's another event.
This year will be free to the, it will be free to the person.
That's great. Another event that, when it was new, Mr. Becker.
And that is also one of the reasons why we do approve it.
That's great.
Because it benefits our.
And we wave the feet as to that. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Okay, I'm sorry. So you're saying any student that's in Dover that wants to go to that doesn't have to pay for that?
Sure, at the high school, yeah.
Do you want?
That's nice.
They asked him, he said he didn't want to go this year. Yeah.
Very good. Okay. Roll call then, please. Mr. Brucia?
Yes.
Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Mr. Scarnio?
Yes.
Mrs. Mullin?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Ruiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Schauer?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you very much, all of that. Good news also, Mr. Scarnio, and Ms. Dodd. On to budget and finance, Ms. Laurie.
I move we approve and/or adopt the following resolutions as listed.
Second. Okay, and we have a motion and we have a second. We're going through item 10 on page seven. Motion and second questions, comments from any other board members?
What are the, what are the changes to the lights?
No change to the light. That's a retroactive payment because when we were doing drilling, the one light post, they hit some rocks, so they had to bring in another drilling outfit to make sure it was secure.
Okay.
Very good with that. Okay, any other questions, comments? Alrighty, roll call, please. Mr. Brucia?
Yes.
Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Mr. Scarnio?
Yes.
Mrs. Mullin?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Ruiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Schauer?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Dover report from Mine Hill, Mr. Brucia. Okay, I think at this time. Mr. Coop, if I could ask you to give a mini update?
Sure. With respect to Mine Hill, the Mine Hill Board of Education, there is some news to report. In the past week, the Mine Hill Board of Education has filed a petition with the Commissioner of Education seeking to withdraw its seventh and eighth grade students only from the attendance of the Dover School. The petition seeks to withdraw students beginning this fall. They do not see, again, it's clear in the petition, they do not see getting change in the status with respect to the high school, and simply with respect to the seventh and eighth grade. We will be filing an answer in opposition to the petition. And due course, there's about a 20-day period where you're supposed to file an answer. So that's, that's the latest on that.
Very good, thank you. Okay, any questions? On to old business. March 22nd, we had a school boards meeting. Mr. Scarnio, do you want to give us a little mini review? Because Lily and I were both unable to follow here.
Yeah, the, the, as most of you all know, public minotaur, we try to, we, school board meetings try to hone in on one specific topic of interest in school board in large towns. So this, this meeting's topic was changing enrollment and how schools deal with the changing enrollment. That was our flagship. We had consultants come in, and they, they went over a lot of information on how forecasting for future enrollment in schools has changed. The old, old rules that we used to go by, looking at birth rate, projecting it out five years, do not necessarily hold true anymore, especially as the population becomes more and more mobile. So they, they came up and went over a lot of, a lot of topics in that, and most of which really seem to focus in on, you want to call in a consultant to, to go over this if you're having anything like this going on, any major changes. They went over about the Rutgers study for how you anticipate enrollment coming from youth development, which is something that is affecting us right now. And it is pretty, pretty much, right now, industry believe that Rutgers formula to figure that out is obsolete. It really doesn't work anymore. So that creates a problem. Overall, Morris County school populations have declined. Every place probably except Dover. And that, that goes actually hand in hand with the biggest growth in Morris County is in the Hispanic population. The Caucasian population and the Afro-American population is actually dropping in the county over the last five years. So really, nothing that we, we haven't seen here in the, in the past couple of years in Dover. We also had a long talk, again, the RNE was pushing their program to come into talk to the schools. So that was a long topic of discussion. And the other topic they talked about that really doesn't affect us is this trend of taking payments in lieu of taxes for developers. And that, that's been a hot button in a lot of areas of the state because the municipal government will go in and they will abate taxes for a developer to come in. And with that comes the penalty that, yeah, it's great that they want to forego their taxes, but they also forego the school taxes at the same time. So there are ways around that, and they went into various ways. Madison just went into one, basically saying that if your town's considering somebody, you need to begin negotiations on the ground for to make sure that, you know, you get your cut of money because if the developer's given a pot of money to, you know, offset their property taxes for the next five or 10 years, are you all right, some of that money should go to the school district? And it doesn't unless you're in there, you know, making a pitch for it. In Madison's case, they, they were able to recoup a lot of money, but it also had to do with the fact that the property being developed wasn't old school, that they sold. Yeah, so they knew right from the beginning that it was going on, and they got themselves in. But, you know, it, those are the, I don't think it really affects us. I don't think any of our, you know, developments, which are all fairly, you know, minor in scope as compared to some of them that they were talking about are having any of that. We were, the town is looking at green radials, and so they're not giving any, any tax breaks for coming in and building right now. But it was a very interesting meeting. It was down at Philadelphia University, the old mansion. I never realized Philadelphia Campus had a mansion. It is a beautiful building, and it was a very, very interesting meeting.
That's great. Thank you very much for presenting for us, as usual. Any other old business board members, anything?
Actually, I have a question regarding this. Thank you, Mr. Scarnio, for attending this. Did the School Board Association presenters offer any guidance? Or did you ask how we might perceive if the Rutgers study is no longer the guide we should use? How then should this board consider the Gunther Mill redevelopment and the Meridia Transit Plaza development and the potential veterans' housing project?
Yeah, they did, and they, they have, they have sent that information out to us. Yeah, they did, and they, they have, they have sent that information out to us. Or they will be sending it out. I don't believe, I, I have not seen it yet, but they are going to send us printed copies of the reports that the consultants have.
Does it seem we're on a tight, tight timeframe for that? The development is, is already started. Do, do we know when we can expect some of that guidance?
I, I figure it should be, you know, I, I don't know that anything that they told us is really going to help us.
Yeah, whatever, whatever we get from them now is not going to make any difference.
Yeah, we, we get to them.
Because we're already contracted with the developments that are happening here in town. Those are contracted, shovel ready, they're ready to go. So it's not going to make any difference, whatever information they give us at this point.
Yeah, it's more geared to, you know, looking down at, you know, at, down the road when, when your towns are doing major development. And they can, you know, we're, we're pretty landlocked. We don't really get the kind of major development that they're talking about. The town's putting up, you know, a thousand new homes, you know, they, they decided to converge, you know, 500 acres of, you know, open space and they're putting a thousand new homes. They're going to be putting in a, you know, 4,000 unit, you know, development going in. You know, ours, ours don't rise to that, to that level. And, and as you said, they were already shoveling the ground and we're going to get what we're going to get out of it.
And, and to go back to, I know you're concerned with the Rutgers study because that's where you were given that information from the construction department.
Yeah.
That's what they use, but Rutgers, I, I'm not sure where Rutgers gets their information from because they have not contacted the school district. So I don't know how they compile their information to give our town. They sort of skip over us. The construction department is not involved with it.
What they basically said was that it's a, it's an outdated study formula. The, 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 the basis of that formula that they use doesn't hold.
Exactly. The way that, that life has changed, occupancy in Dover has changed. They have not kept up with it and they have not been in contact with us. So where they got their information from, I have no idea. Probably state reports.
I think the study was from 2015, so things must change pretty fast. But for us, we still need to figure out if there is going to be any effect on the student population. Do we need to do anything about it? And, and if I heard you correctly, Mr. Scarnio, you're saying that you don't anticipate that these developments will create a reason for us to do anything?
Which is what the town is also saying.
It's not that we don't, I, I don't think, that's not really true. I mean, it's not that we can't do it and we don't. It's just, it's kind of late in the game for us to be able to do anything about them. I mean, they, when you're talking about this, they usually, you know, trying to fight the development by saying it's going to add more kids into it than the school district can handle or, you know, we're going to have to make some provisions because we're going to have to build a new building or put an addition on a building. And we're way past that already. Even if we decided at this point that we needed to put in an addition on a building, I mean, that would be years.
And where, where would it be?
Where would it be? And it would be years before.
Well, I mean, we could have it built up now. I mean, exactly. We're, we can't.
Well, we already did build it up. We already did build it up.
Yeah, we're built down.
East Dover is already built up. Academy Street is three stories. We can't go any more up on that on over.
North Dover, West Dover.
Yeah, north. So we're already at, those buildings are full. And I think for a very good example, I know that some of these figures compiled out of curiosity. For example, the townhouses, the brick buildings on Blackwell Street, when those were built, they were supposed to be for young professional families that had newborn to one-year-old child. I don't even know at that point if it was one and a half children. I think it was newborns. So they were starter family residents. And just in those brownstones, how many students? I don't want to put you on the spot, but two, nineteen? Nineteen. They said zero. And we have 19 school-aged children that are picked up and dropped off. And sometimes in that area, because we do have some special ed students, but 19 students that just live in those brownstones. So that's a perfect example. When you have a development come in, they open the doors, they say that they can guarantee that you're only supposed to have so many kids living there.
So that makes my stomach hurt because the, the town is saying.
Joy in all world.
Yeah, the town is saying, based on this study, we don't expect a lot of students. I'm hearing us say that we have nowhere to put these students if it ends up being instead of zero 19. So we're going to have students without a school for them to go to?
No, that's not what we're saying. We're not saying, we have had temporary classrooms. We have had trailers until we've.
We rented space.
We've rented space. We just stopped renting space two years ago.
Right, yeah.
Two years ago, we just stopped renting space in the town. We have rented space. Students that come to us will be happy. We will somehow work it out.
The biggest impact might be that class size hasn't gone up. Because there is no empty class spaces to sit there and say, I think Mr. Becker said when we, we had the parents beginning of the year come in and have the state, they concerned over the size of the third grade in East Dover. Our response was to create another third grade section in East Dover. That in effect, as we said, took up our last available empty class space that we had. So now, you know, if we get another 10 students, we're going to fit them in, but it is going to be probably, and, and, you know, you're not going to have, get 10 students probably in one grade. So you may go up one in this class, maybe two in that class.
And this is nothing new. I don't mean to, to make this seem like this is an urgent situation. 20 years ago, when I first moved to this town, we went to our first transit village development meeting. I still have a copy of the plans at home somewhere, and we were told exactly the same thing. Well, this is just going to be young professionals, not with families. These are going to be one and two-bedroom units, some studios. And at that point, we said, I think one of, one of our bright new residents in Dover raised her hand and said, do these apartments come with birth control then? Because how do you stop people from having children? How do you, and when they have children, they're going to want to go to school. So it, this is nothing new. It's, with every development, we have the same issue. And our construction department does work with these developers in good faith with what information they have. But as we know, once you've signed the line on a mortgage and you're locked into something, there's a lot of factors that play into being able to get out of that residence and move into a larger home. So if you have more kids than what you thought you were going to when you bought it, you're stuck there. So that's what's.
And it's, and it's like every year around August, we start asking our administrators, how are the, how are the numbers looking?
How are the numbers?
And they, they start telling us how everyone's going to be placed.
And, and we're, and we're bucking the trend right now. We're, we're just about the only town in the county that has experienced growth in the school population over the last five years. Everybody else is down to the point that there's a lot of towns in there that are looking at having to close schools because they don't have a population anymore to keep them open. So, in a way, I, we don't know if this is, is a, is a temporary bubble in our population. I mean, we've had a lot of growth over the last two years. So is this temporary? Is it going to even out with these people now? They become more activated now. They're going to, you know, move out of Dover into other areas. That, that could very well happen. So it's, you know, it's not really time to.
Or what is it you say, Mr. Becker? You always say it's like a moving, you always have something you say about a moving target.
I'm sure it was really.
A moving target, a moving target every year.
And anytime I hear Rutgers things quoted and I'm told not to worry, I really begin to worry because of that part place. I think that's what we're talking about.
Yes.
The 19 initial students, that was rated for zero. And my concern is over the Berry Street, how many apartments are they looking at there in Berry King Street?
It's 23.
We're going to start with eight.
Right, so eight.
So I, I have the facts here, exactly according to, to what I shared with you all. They are 214 dwelling units, small one and two bedrooms. The occupants are expected by 2019 between the three developments, one of which has not been approved yet, but will be, the Veterans Housing Project. According to the Rutgers study and the town, they're saying we can expect between 45 and 49 students by 2020. And if, and if we are now learning that the Rutgers study is, is not the correct guide and we have not yet received a new guide, can we absorb double that number, triple that number?
And you take out of that numbers, you take out the Veterans Housing, and how many have they done, saying for the balance? Because that veterans is where they're claiming most of the new students.
Yeah, and that's one of the two, three bedroom apartments.
If you subtract the veterans from the balance and all those apartments that they're predicting, another 200. Now, I, I'm not really a betting person. I'd be willing to bet and receive more than the dozen students that they're predicting. So there is a concern. Couple that on top of the fact that since September, if you take your September enrollment, and I'm not talking September to September, but this September to right now, our numbers have increased by 7%. So an additional 226 students have enrolled into Dover during that time period. The cohort survival study that I've always used in the past no longer works because none of it is dependent on our birth rate. Rutgers hasn't been accurate for some time in terms of my own particular situation, how to use it. I, I think if you look at a transit hub and perhaps Hoboken, you're looking at a whole different dynamic than what they're looking at for King and Berry Streets. And they're trying to use the same projections for it. And I think there's some erroneous data in there. But, you know, time will tell. Will it be right or wrong, right? It's a 50/50 chance.
So when, when do we need to worry or act?
I'm worried right now.
As it's happening, always, every day, every day, it's a.
And what we do, you see, the problem is, like, when you look at your survival studies and your building capacities, you always have flexibility in building capacities in terms of some of the classes, some of the special ed classes, some of the ELL classes, in terms of where do we have targeted audience? So like, we have a lot of students who have a homeschool, a lot of people that are homeschool. If the homeschool is another district, we have some flexibility and mobility there. We also have flexibility in terms of preschool. Then we have lost our preschool, I mean, quite a bit of it this year, not all of it, but quite a bit. So we know that there's going to be a effect there. But that's why we have a very close working relationship with Primer Paso in terms of working with them to provide some of our preschool services. Also Head Start does provide some opportunities. But if we can work with our community partners and start opening up classrooms there, that might open up classrooms for some of the other grade levels. So we have a flexibility. And what we do is we actually started next, next year's projections, we started last October. So we've been updating them as we go and trying to see where we stand because we don't want classes, we don't want to increase our class size. We don't want class sizes over 24 students if we count in the elementary school. Now granted, it'd be nice if you mine Hill, we'll have 13 students in a classroom, but that's not something that's viable for our taxpayers or us, our economic base. So we're constantly monitoring it, and it is quite a challenge because we're really a microcosm of federal national policies. So it probably impacts us so much more than other places. And we just have to adapt. We have different means to meet the needs of our children. So, and we've been through this, it's a cyclical thing. We've been through it quite a few times. And at this point, I'm not panicked, but I am worried about it. That's why there was even the discussion of different districts and coming or going and everything else. I don't think it's a case where we're out of space, but that space is now becoming a dream room. So if our growth continues at 7% a year, no amount of cohort survival planning is going to anticipate that for you. But we've seen cases where we have a lot of students enter and then at the end of the year, quite a few students then move out to other areas. So we track it very carefully. I wish I could tell you I don't worry about it. I do. It's something that we watch and something that we've gotten, become accustomed to dealing with, ever comfortably, but.
I mean, like, our, our growth over the last couple of years is not because of development.
No, it's true.
So I think that's where, that's where, you know, you look at the hope that as, as our new residents become more and more established, they get on their feet and they, you know, find, you know, new places to, to live.
And I think the Veterans Home was just approved.
Well, it does approve.
Yeah, it was just approved.
Yeah, this, my report is dated back.
They met all the requirements and.
March 13th.
Pretty sure it was just approved.
Yeah, they were pretty confident it was going to be approved in March 13th when I, when I sent the, the data.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone, for that input. On to new business. We have our rolling calendar. We have in two weeks, April 25th, we have our budget hearing here in our media center. It's a very important meeting. We're going to have a wonderful presentation with a lot of information about what has gone on in the district throughout the year, what we plan in the district for the coming year, and of course, all important, the, the budget. So that is at 8 o'clock here on April 25th. We also have our Morris County Association of Administrators meet dinner on June 7th. We talked about that at, at a previous meeting. Then we have New Jersey School Boards, April 26th, again at the mansion in Mountain Lake. And we have School Board Workshop Convention. Can't believe we're already talking about that. That's October 23rd through 26th. To those of you who want to attend, please let Ms. Jenish know as soon as possible so that we can work out the logistics. And for anyone who needs training, there's also trainings that are available there for your training requirements. Yes, Mr. Becker?
Workshop is longer this year. There's been another day added. It used to run Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. It now runs Monday through Thursday. So they got another day. Has an opportunity for people to come in and take advantage of the programs and the training. Got a really tight air zone.
Okay, very good. Any questions or comments?
Do we know what the topics going to be on April 26th?
No, it's not.
It's still a little.
Yeah, they say.
Yeah, the, the April 26th meeting, the last meeting of the year, is usually the good news and sharing.
Oh, and the awards.
And the awards, yes. So all, all board members that have received either their certified, certified board member, master board member, certified board leader, certified school boards, and also longevity awards will be recognized at that, at that meeting. We also usually have a couple of different schools that bring their students in and give a, a program of, of, you know, an outstanding program that they run in their district. I don't know who those are that come yet, but that's, it's usually real good being the last meeting here.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Scarnio. Okay, any other questions?
So for any board of our board members that would like to attend this workshop, which includes the trainings, does the district or does, who would cover the cost of transportation and lodging?
The district. You would have to, you have to be approved. We would vote on the cost. You would outlay the funds first, your own transportation. Hotel room, Kathy? Because normally the board members that go, we have comps for it, so we don't charge the district anything. How do we work that?
There's usually approved hotels that board members are allowed to stay at, and per DM rate, it's all covered. I'm really worried too specifics about.
I, I know, it's been. Yeah, it's been so long since we've had to. So that would be, but you let Ms. Jenish know if you'd like to attend so that she can register you.
And do we usually, like, does this happen every year in Atlantic City? And every year, how many of us usually attend?
The whole board can go. As many people that want to go can go. We don't have a limitation on that. Normally, it's three or four, three or four of us go.
Well, three or four of us, considering this board.
Right. The good thing is, as I said, the board members that have been going for the past six years, seven years, we've used our comps. So we don't, there's really no charge.
Well, you mean your Atlantic City comps.
Yes. So we get free rooms and we don't charge anything. So.
I thought they're going to be comps from the.
No.
But you mean your own.
Personal comps. It doesn't cost the district anything for us to stay there, but it does cost for the registration. So let Ms. Jenish know.
But if there's, if there's more than, say, people, then we get a group rate.
Right.
Works out a person better than if, you know, just. So it's good, you know, to know in advance how many.
And then usually, I don't know what, what the timeframe is. It's October, so probably by, I would say, early September, school boards will have the classes online that you can register for, start registering for them. They fill up very fast.
They actually just put that stuff out this week.
Do they put the classes?
They should start out the classes.
That you can register, because that's usually not till last minute.
Yeah, they just, yeah, they just, we'll have finalized it. They, they just started getting publications.
Oh, for, for workshop?
Yeah.
I know, I had to, I usually get presentations there, and we just had to put in our suggested topics yesterday. So I, I think it'll be over the next couple of months.
It's usually, but the end of the summer, by the time school starts again, they start doing.
Certainly in the summer.
Okay, anybody else? Very good. Move on then to the second part of the meeting for the public, public comment. As I said earlier, this is your portion to speak about anything, not just agenda items. And if you can stand, state your name and your address. You'll have three minutes for a grand total of 30 minutes. Whoever you're ready, who, who would ever like to stand up first? Any comments? Yes, sir.
How you doing? Michael Moore.
Good evening.
I reside at Victory Gardens. I have schools in the Dover school system. And I'm here to find out, as far as Jefferson goes, I never heard anything else about it. I have a lot of connections as far as our community in Dover as well as schools in the system. No one has mentioned anything besides the trip that a few Dover kids went up there. Couple Jefferson kids came down here, but I heard no resolution. Has anybody been reprimanded? Has, you know, has anything been done? Not to get into too much detail, I want to make the point. When I had a phone. When I had a phone call with Principal Mr. Franks, I brought up some issues that I feel like were kind of brushed under the rug as far as like retaliation issues going on in the Dover system, as far as the basketball school goes. The conversation was, the point I made about my son being retaliated was kind of dismissed. At the end of the conversation, I brought it back up. After we conversated some more, I said, well, I just brought up my son, who's in school, who's in the school system, being retaliated on by another, by the basketball coach. He said, when did you ask me this? So we went on to have the conversation. I don't think I've ever got my answer. Pretty much I was told why I had the problem. He was telling me why I had the problem. I just don't feel like it was handled when I'm a concerned parent, when I want answers. And the school system that my son goes to cannot provide me answers. To me, that's a problem. Next thing is, there's also been signs of unfairness directed towards certain kids. Now, of course, I'm not in the school system to see what these kids are doing to warrant certain behaviors or certain reprimands that, that go on. But I know.
Excuse me, sir. You have about a minute left.
Thank you. I know it's the same kids over and over again. That's kind of an issue. Next, the NJJSIA said that the whole situation with Dover and Jefferson has been resolved, which pretty much means I think it's being swept under the rug. And when you have racial issues directed towards kids in the school system that's swept under the rug, being resolved by the whole, you know, transfer of schools, that that's, that's not legit. That's not legit. You gotta back your kids up. And if they're being mistreated, you should feel offended as much as they do. And also my emails, I've sent emails, three emails this year, two of which I've met with Mr. Franks and Athletic Director Bullock. Also Coach Romano was also CC'd and the messages, not once he showed up. And I have questions directed towards him and that meeting that were never addressed because of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Jonathan Munoz, St. West Cooper Street. I just wanna follow up Mr. Moore's question. This is probably my second or third meeting asking the same thing. I've heard we've received two different awards, but yet we still have to receive a policy that protects the students in sports. What is the status of that? Every meeting that I come here, I don't receive an answer, nor do I receive an update, nor do any of these parents receive a policy that deals with that particular situation. So starting to get tired a little bit to just come in here as I read your public comment paragraph that says that the board recognizes the value of public comment in educational issues and the importance for long members of the public to express themselves. What good is it if we express our concerns as parents and as members of the community if they're just gonna be swept under the rug? And honestly, I'm just tired of it. So second part is, once again, we're sitting here talking about development work and everything that has happened for the past 20 years. And I'm sorry to state that I politely disagree with your statement about these things not being predictable. There's something called statistics and there's something called probability studies that if you document what has happened for the past 20 years, you could define a confidence level that's gonna, that's gonna project how many students are you expected to enroll by the year 2019, 2020, 2050, given the amount of students that increased from September of last year to this time period and the amount of students that dropped before the end of the year. That's simple math. And I'm assuming that we have a very well-equipped math department in this school district. So why don't we take advantage of that? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else?
Just wanna make sure there's no one else. Monica Palesis, 393 West Blackwell Street. In the discussion that you had regarding the Rutgers study and regarding any other measures that we would use in terms of planning for increased enrollment, have you done a demographic study yourselves? I mean, from my perspective, the first thing that you're going to do when there is a planned development of any kind, what a school board generally does is to do a demographic study of their own because I think that you're absolutely correct. You're going to hear certain things from individuals that are actually building the places. And the town is going to say one thing. But the board has the ability to do a demographic study. So that's my first question. Has the board done a demographic study? And also, do you have a five-year long-range plan? Because generally, a school board has a five-year long-range facility plan. So those are the two questions, a demographic study and a long-range facility plan. And I think it goes back to what Jonathan was saying, that there are mechanisms for, we can't just hear, well, the Rutgers model no longer works. And it doesn't matter whether or not the townhouses or whatever they are are going to be built. The question is, how do we deal and how do we know what the numbers are that are coming forward? And how do we plan for that? And I think that's what you're hearing from us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else, I will. Yes.
Given the fact that you only got three minutes to talk. So my other question is a follow-up question with regards to the whole information we're supposed to receive in terms of the army coming to the school. And so I don't know if additional information has been provided and if any information's gonna be provided to the parents before this event takes place. And the second one was, has the board given any consideration to S A T prep? I know last meeting, it was stated handled through Capone University, I believe. However, I did my own research, talked with the students. And someone got invitation by letters for S A T prep last year. So which one is it? And from what I hear, it's only a select few students that receive these type of letters. And majority of them, if I'm not mistaken, all of them, they're high academic achievers. So that pains me to pose this type of question. Are we inviting those students that are gonna help us with the ratings of our school? And is that the sole purpose of providing that type of training? Or are we to provide that type of training to anybody that wants it, regardless of their academic achievement at this time?
Thank you. Anyone else?